Being after 10:30, I'll call the meeting in order. Notice the meeting was properly posted Monday, February 6th, 2017. Item 3, discussion of view and possible action regarding the proposed repurposing of Pauline Meyer Shelter. And then there's also an item 3A, which we can get to. Stacy, have you had or Gretchen, you have anything kind of generally related to that before we get into 3A?
Well, what I would suggest to me is that if we jump to 4, see the, the, the repurposing and the lease go hand in hand. I mean, I don't think you can move one without the other. So because the entire purpose of the repurposing is to enter into the lease with DHS. So if we can't hammer through the lease, you'd waste a lot of time on the other.
That's fine with me.
If you're ready.
Yeah.
And DHS is here. So, but it's up to the committee when they want to do it.
Okay. So, let's go ahead and entertain item number 4, which is discussion of view and possible action regarding an amended lease with DHS related to the proposed repurposing of a Pauline Meyer Shelter located at the Oakwood County Juvenile Bureau. And by way of kind of recap, this committee had entertained previously with council a lease draft, and we had recommended that the board accept our recommendation regarding this lease, which would then be entered into by the board and forwarded to DHS for their consideration. And my understanding is that DHS has come back and would like to discuss what we sent over for them to review, as I heard.
Right. The history is that this committee approved this amended lease agreement with all its terms and was okay with it to go onto the board county commissioners. But again, it's not hard to the board's consent. And they would like to discuss the terms, especially credit.
Okay. And so, we have from DHS, Mr. Ely, correct?
Yes, sir. Jack Ely, I represent DHS. The real impasse that DHS has with the lease as proposed is that it broadens the definition of maintenance. We have previously listed exactly what maintenance was, and there's been an addition to the sentence defining it. I think it shall include that not be limited to those things. And then it added at number 11 in that list, replacing HVAC or exhaust systems as needed. Well, DHS doesn't own that building. It's never owned that building. So, as the, it's DHS's position that the county, as the owner, would be responsible for large-scale repairs or replacements. We, even if we wanted to, we can't afford entering to this as it's currently proposed.
Okay. If I might, what, what, over the history of the lease with the county, or in the proposed lease with the county, what are the, what is the rent you're paying for them?
Zero.
Zero. Correct.
If I might.
And what is the, what is the rate?
I'd like to remind you though, that DHS retired every penny of debt against that entire campus.
I understand. And what is the term of this proposed lease?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. So, from the county's persis, well, I can't speak to the county. From my perspective, it doesn't seem unreasonable that we would request that DHS would perform maintenance up to and including the replacing of the HVAC system when the building is free and the lease is 25 years. And, and just so you know, we, we have entered into a lease similar to this with Oklahoma State University for the provision of extension services here in Oklahoma County as well. So, we, we have done this with other long-term tenants who pay no rent as well.
That, I mean, that's kind of my perspective. I don't know, if I want to. And if I may.
Yes, please.
Mr. Gould is an architect employed by DHS, and we are contributing his services on an in-kind basis as a part or as a contribution to what the repurposing would entail, the actual construction end of it. And I don't think he can say this has no value.
I, I would agree that there is value there, but I would also point out that it was my understanding that the reason we were doing so is because the donor didn't want to spend money for an architect. Otherwise, the county, as you recall, I think we jumped through several hoops to make sure that we could do that. And if this were a county project, we would have paid for the architectural services. So, yes, we reckon, or I recognize that there is a value in that service.
Yeah. And to tell you the truth, I can't speak to, I haven't even had any discussions with the donor or the donor representatives. I don't know anything about the Oklahoma State contract lens of intent. I'm just telling you point-blank what our position is because, again, even if we wanted to, we couldn't agree to this.
I'm trying to clarify for the donor. I, I think we're just trying to be as cost-effective as possible. And DHS is willing to provide these services and want to utilize that space of money for the project.
Right. I think we understand that. We appreciate that. The, the point was that DHS was contributing, and there's a reason that they are, right? Or at least from my perspective.
I mean, 20,000 square feet approximately. If you were to go out to commercial market, rent the same space, your rent, portions of that rent is going to be set aside to do the maintenance. I mean, I, the way I see it is we're not charging any rent.
Keith, am I asked a question?
Yeah.
Is this different from the original lease? Is this?
Not really. Sarah, what happened was the old, old existing lease didn't talk about the repurposing. It just said it was going to be used as a shelter, et cetera, et cetera. So, the new proposed lease, we sent out, I sent out a rough version. DHS wanted to deploy maintenance. They sent that back to me. Stacy reviewed it and added more back to it. So, it's been, it's in negotiations at this point. Nothing's been approved, and now it's being amended.
Okay.
Well, and I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I just, I know it's the last meeting we discussed, you know, everything kind of, or the term being 25 years in spirit of the original lease.
Right. These terms were in it at that point.
Okay. So, these, this is not different than what was the original lease?
No. No. This is the same lease this was discussed, when we were discussing the terms.
I might add, we could agree to do nothing at all, and we still have possession of that so long as we wanted it for about another 25 years. So, there's some value. The county's getting a million and a half dollars worth of benefit to its property. And we've already prepaid all the rent by DHS, that is, by having paid off all the debt on that campus. So, if we do absolutely nothing at all, we still have a legal right to occupy that premises. We're, what we're suggesting is, we'd like to contribute on an in-kind basis to improve something we already have a legal right to. And we don't want to stand in the way of that, but by the same token, in good conscience and in good faith, I can't tell you we can agree to those items because our budget situation, as everyone knows, is beyond guidance.
I, I would have to defer to our council as to the status of the current lease and the, and the legal right of the tenant. However, I haven't read it. The, I would assume, as most contracts the county enters into, there's a 30-day out. There's some, there's some period of an out in that. I, I could be wrong. Like I said, I haven't read it. And I would hate, I, like you, probably would hate to get to that point. However, I don't think it's unreasonable for the county to put forth a lease where we're, we're asking the same of you as a tenant that we've asked from another state entity as a tenant for a long-term, no-cost lease.
What is the status of the HVAC system? Does anyone know that?
Yeah, my office looked at that last week. There's 11 total units. There's separate units in various parts of the building. And three of those units are clearly new units. So, I'm assuming DHS has already replaced three of them because I can find the record where I did it.
I, I can't answer that. I don't know.
So, there's eight of the old units. Keith's more than expert on this, but the old are 22, very expensive to repair if they have a problem.
It is all very expensive now, whether you repair existing equipment or whether you replace old equipment with new equipment. It, it's all just very expensive anymore, and these kinds of things are going to continue to increase in price and value. Also, I have plans, but when you reconfigure a building, in many cases, the existing HVAC won't adequately serve the changes that were made. Your architect, I'm certain, could identify some of these, these needs and problems. But, air conditioning is going to be expensive to address.
Assuming that the existing HVAC system would accommodate the renovation, is there an expected life of the current system? I mean, you know, when I buy one for my house, they say, "Oh, lady, it's going to be good for 20 years." You know, great, I just spent $8,000 on my little mini house. Maybe it didn't do this in 20 years. Do we have an expectation? Because Sarah had a great idea when we were visiting, and that was, well, maybe we ought to just replace it as part of the, part of the renovation project and, and see if we can't do that within the current budget. If we can't, maybe then we need to go back to the donor and ask. I mean, that's something to explore. And then you've got, hopefully, 25. How long do they last, do you think?
You have various tons, but there is a time limit to them. And obviously, three of them have already, on partial life expectancy, and somebody's replaced.
But that's a great suggestion.
Is there a warranty that we can purchase on top of that, something to get rid of that effect?
Well.
Yes. So, the machinery will last typically, if it's replaced with new equipment, the warranty that you can expect is five years. And in some cases, additional pieces and parts carry extended warranties. Compressors now will carry upwards of a 10-year warranty. That may be a solution, depending on how the building is reconfigured. If you were to use new equipment purchased at the time the building was repurposed, it not only matches what you're trying to do within the space, but basically gives you five years of maintenance-free issues or, or cost-free issues.
So, Keith, can you, can you ballpark what replacing the HVAC system costs for that, for that amount?
I, I don't have that number at.
No, I'm not looking for anything except, because, you know, we're, we're encountering the same thing in this. They are moving offices around, changing four by four, four in a continuous case, they're redoing the HVAC system. So, this is why it seems so very familiar to all of us.
What's the tonnage on that piece of equipment being up?
I don't know. The tonnage is on the eighth that haven't been replaced.
We can probably identify the size of each of those units since our maintenance people have been maintaining the system since we've been in it. I've already provided kind of a ballpark estimate to, to do the work to the HVAC system that will have to be done from the units going into the building, basically, from upwards to the diffusers. So, I think what we would need to do is go back to our maintenance staff and just see if they can give us some numbers to replace each of those units based on the tonnage of them. I, I had given Sarah a number earlier based on like a four-ton unit, but I would imagine we've got units on that, on that roof that range anywhere from four to seven tons.
Some tens perhaps.
Yeah. And so, I mean, we could come up with those numbers if it would be helpful.
I think what you're going to find is any repair work that needs to be done, particularly if it involves refrigerants of any kind, those prices have escalated beyond belief. So, at some point, you will spend as much repairing a system that's gone down as what it would have cost to replace it. I think if you address that initially, you're, you're miles ahead.
All right. So, this makes it a real circular.
If I, if I could. You're talking about going and looking at additional costs, which is a delay, which I believe the donor has indicated there's a timeframe that we need to proceed with. Stacy has indicated there's a timeframe we need to proceed with. Keep in mind, Mr. Ely, all this body does is make recommendations. So, we recommend ultimately to leave the lease as it is and put it before the board. They may or they may not choose to go in that direction. But, in the interest of time, and Stacy, you were telling me we need to be moving on this by.
Well, the donor had put the May date in her agreement, so based on that, I kind of backed some things in. And I've got interviews scheduled for the MEP engineers that would assist the DHS architect for the 14th of this month. So, to get them on board, to get them working on some of these very issues, MEPs in mechanical, electrical plumbing, try to hit that May date, you know, we are on the schedule.
And if I can just add, if we can't get this deal done, donor is, I spoke with the donor yesterday, and they are looking for other projects for the economy. So, we'll lose out on this.
I forgot your name, sir.
Scott Gould.
Scott, on the, on the timeframe, to kind of get the information back regarding cost or replacement, et cetera, how quickly could you, could you do that? We have another, we have a regular scheduled meeting for this coming Monday that we could, I mean.
That would be quick, but I'll, I'll, I'll see what I can do to get, to get that to you by Monday. Is that, how soon would you need to know that, to put it on the agenda?
Well, it seems to be, it, it seems to be more of an issue for DHS than it does for, at least for me. I, I know where I'm at at this point. This, this lease that we, we're recommending to the board, like I said, is not anything different than what we've recently done with OSU at the building that they occupy, that is county-owned.
Can I ask?
Did they build that building?
No, they did not.
Okay. Hypothetical then, assume that it's cost-effective and everyone agrees that the HVAC ought to be replaced at the same time, that all the other work is done, would DHS then be agreeable to the term as written?
With, if a warranty could be purchased that would cover a significant portion of the term of the lease.
I can't speak to it right now, but I, equal Monday, we might be able to confirm that DHS can move the task.
We'll certainly take that back to our leadership and, and let them know that that's on the table.
So, if we could replace the systems during the project, purchase a warranty for an extended period, maybe DHS might be.
Impossible. I just, I can't speak to it.
Okay. Then, is that going to take, okay, again, assumption, replace the HVAC, how much force is going to take the project over budget? I mean, I know I'm asking, I'm not looking for anything firm. Is it 200,000, 50,000?
And, and to be honest, Gretchen, I, I won't know that until I get some numbers back from our, from our maintenance people.
Let me ask a question. With your design work, taking into consideration the HVAC tonnage that's available, was it adequate to cover what you intended to do with the interior?
At, at the point we're at right now, we have not considered if, if, if the HVAC systems are adequate because I have not had engineers on board to evaluate those systems. Basically, I've done what I can do as an architect to, to just figure what it would cost replacing that work and, you know, everything from the units on down.
I'm going to assume I can speak for Miles on this, but if you can't get it to us by Monday, I'm sure that we would be happy to schedule another special meeting just to consider these items. I mean, we all agree it's an important and worthy project, and we're all trying to look out for the best interests of our respective parties.
Certainly. And I appreciate your willingness to call this special meeting and to call another if necessary, but we'll do everything we can to get you.
Okay. Can I have a hypothetical? Assuming we move forward and more money is needed, how much of the season's agenda would be in consideration?
I would, I think, I think.
I know you can't speak for her, but.
I, I can, for sure. With that disclaimer, I think if the parties are working and making progress and everything is going relatively smoothly, then I think that they're open. And I, I think the council, we can certainly try to, with the other parties, raise more funds as well. I'm certainly willing and more than happy to, to work on that too.
So, Miles?
You, good luck.
Matthew, we can just go ahead and put these two, add these two items to our regular agenda, right? Because you were, you were requesting items by Thursday. So, we'll, we'll just go ahead and add these for, for Monday then. And then, if you have the information, that's fantastic. If it becomes necessary, we can just strike those items and then have a special meeting.
We have a, a regular meeting on the 13th and a regular meeting on the 27th.
Okay. I would envision we would need to move sooner than the 27th.
In between there.
Okay. And perhaps our third member will be here as well because I think it's important for, for everybody to be present.
Okay.
Wait a minute. I get, I hate to be throwing more wrenches in, but this discussion is getting to a point where. How old is this building? Do you know? How long you have the lease on it?
It was, it was occupied approximately 1985.
So, it's 30-plus years old?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I know that, since I've been here nine years, I've replaced the roof at the juvenile building to the south. Okay. Do you know if this roof has ever been replaced?
I, I do not know that. I, I, again, I could probably find out from our maintenance.
Right. So, if it's a 30-year-old roof right now, and you're going to put a couple of million dollars underneath that roof, you can see where I'm going with this. That's going to be an issue too at some point. I don't want to get into a situation where, where it's back in this room arguing over who's going to, you know, patch or replace the roof. Maybe we think about that in this project as well. And where I get this, you know, we, you're aware of the statute. When you get 158,000 or more, you have to get the architects and the engineers on board to put a competent set of plans together. And we will do that. And I know you want to do that. Well, that competent set of plans, including a roof or not including a roof. And so, the, the infrastructure stuff, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, roofs, all that stuff has to go first before you do offices and bedrooms and furniture and stuff. It's just a hierarchy kind of thing. So, I don't want, there to be any misconceptions by the donors and everybody else on what goes first. And if you run out of money, what gets left out? You're not going to leave out the infrastructure. You're going to leave out the office furniture and the offices and things of that nature.
What type of roof is it?
I don't even know.
It's a built-up?
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's a gravel, uh, uh, Dallas, Dallas that built that roof.
There are some roofs now that carry as much as a 20-year warranty. The roofing systems have changed certainly since that building was built. This might be a case where if it was addressed, the, the roof might operate to be tentative.
And, and what I'm finding out is roof warranties are kind of a tricky issue. We've got a building with a 20-year, no-dollar limit warranty on it that started to blister and bubble up. Very reputable roof manufacturer, and they, what they told us is, "We'll fix the leaks." "We won't fix the roof, we'll fix the leaks."
We've had good luck with the TBO products that are, that's what you're saying.
This, this is, this is a modified roof.
Yeah. I'm sure there's no warranty left on a 30-year-old roof.
No, I, I can't imagine. If that's the original roof, it's, it's out of warranty.
There'll have to be some, if you decide to go with replacement of HVAC systems.
Which live on that roof.
If they're, well, if they're package units, the curving or the penetrations through the roof change dimensionally with, with the equipment. So, there's going to have to be some roof work done anyway, would be my guess. You know, the building envelope should be a prime consideration. You know, we've had issues out there with JJC and water penetration. I believe it's the same kind of brick, same kind of border windows, et cetera.
And that's why I brought the subject here.
Can we call it in? Okay, over 4.4? No. Okay.
Stacy, anything else?
I don't think so on this issue.
Gretchen, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. DHS, anything else? Sarah, do you have anything?
Thank you very much.
Okay. So, Miles, you had a motion to defer to.
I'm going to defer. I'm going to regularly schedule.
Meeting on February 13th. And I'll second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, I would assume given that we have deferred item 4, most of the defer item 3 would also be in order.
Yeah, what was I about to say?
On favor?
This was item 4.
That was item 4, but, all right.
What did you want to talk about?
Yeah, I still need to talk to you about 3A because the interview is our schedule.
Well, but given what Gretchen had said earlier, and we don't have a lease, if we can't come to some kind of terms on a lease, it's premature, I guess.
Wouldn't be premature to go ahead and award and enter into a contract. I don't know that it's premature to go ahead since these guys have gotten ready for an interview to go ahead and interview them. And that's, that's up to you, how I can.
When are those scheduled for?
The 14th.
The day after the next regular meeting.
You know, attempts to stay on schedule and the same things are going to work out. That's where I'm kind of leaning towards at least doing the interviews. If we decide not to move forward, then we just simply don't do a contract.
Oh. Yeah, is there a timeframe between doing the interviews and awarding the contract?
Well, yeah. Yeah, you've got, more to county commissioners' processes.
No, no, I mean, as far as, as the, as the, the proposed engineers, there's no definite timeframe between interviewing someone and contracting with them.
No. No, I can fit that off quite a way. As fast as you can do it, still two or three weeks.
Right. Well, we are internal processes, but, so, I guess.
So, I guess what I'm saying, if I interview them in February, mid-February, it's going to be close to mid-March for our contract. If everything goes well. So, however often you are to fit that off, you're just moving the project.
Getting closer to the meeting.
Well.
Six, one-half dozen in the other, as far as I'm concerned. We are going to meet Monday. Your first interviews are scheduled on the 14th. Would be plenty of time.
Yeah, I just say, you know, for, for the committee, you can do that today and get them.
I think we might have a better reading of the tea leads come Monday. But that, I, again, I'm one person. I don't know what, Miles might have a different thought and.
I, I'm with you. It doesn't, six, one-half dozen in the other. I mean, if we're going to be done on the 13th, and Keith's got interviews on the 14th, all we need to say who's going to be on the committee and move.
Okay. If I may, I, the donor was happy to hear that at least we were, you know, kind of moving forward with taking a look at interviewing engineers. Thought it helped.
Well, it's on the, it's on the agenda. It can be discussed for as long as you want without a decision being made. So, if anybody has any comments, you know, questions, now's the time. It's not to say that it won't be deferred again until the meeting. You know, part of the meeting is for you guys too, so.
Sure.
Sure.
One, one question that I have is concerning the, the contracting with the consultants. Will, will we have a construction delivery method decided on prior to contracting with them?
Uh, maybe, maybe not. I, in part of the interview, one of the questions I've told them, I want to know their experience with all different methods of delivery, so that I know how good they are at the, the new ones that the statute allows.
That, that also may affect their, their proposals when, when we...
Price-wise, you're right, so, um, that's a good point. It's hard to actually contracting with them. We could probably settle that issue, but to interview them, I don't really need to know that, you know.
And may I ask, what time is the meeting Monday?
Ten. Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock. Thank you.
Who needs to be on this committee?
Jane and I, and how many of you guys want to be on?
Yeah, Miles, I was just kind of thinking, Stacy, Jane, and one person from us.
So let's just do one person.
Just go ahead and do it now?
I'll do it.
Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and we'll do item three A. Is there a motion to create a subcommittee to interview, review, and make recommendations back to the infrastructure committee regarding firms providing structural and MEP services for the Pauline Meyer Shelter repurposing project to consist of the engineer, the townie purchasing agent, and Miles Davidson from District Two?
Who's it?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else on item three? All right. So that concludes item three. Any citizens' participation? Anyone else? Oh, item five, you have to think, Miles, new business. Do we have any new business? Seeing none, all right, six. Citizens' participation? None?
Or comments? Miles, give me yours.
None from me. I may adjourn. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.